...did the research on the library situation. And we'll hear first from Bruce at the Porton Research Group. We'll make a presentation. And then we'll have an opportunity for questions and answers, first from the board and from the Library Committee, then from the public, and then we'll finish with any further final questions from the Board of the Library Committee. We're not going to discuss any next steps tonight. From what I understand and what I see, we're going to be bombarded with a huge amount of data. And I think it's wise to just take that data and let it cogitate among us for a little while. We do have an agenda item on our Select Board meeting next Monday to start talking about next steps. That may be a fairly brief discussion, maybe just a sense of the Board, and then perhaps a scheduling of a workshop with the Library Committee to move forward at that point. But for tonight, it's all about the data. The questions and answers will be about the data directed to Bruce, who can answer those questions. And so without any further ado, I'll let Bruce take the floor.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for having me back again. I know everybody did a great job filling out the survey. We got a lot of responses, a lot of good data. And as we expressed in the communications, that this was not a vote, but just research to try to get a holistic view of what the residents of Rockport would like in a library, if in fact they wanted to continue supporting a library. Okay? So I'm going to go through it, and hopefully I can explain some of the things clearly so that everybody has a good handle on what we learned. I do suffer from fat thumb syndrome, so if I skip a few slides, I apologize. So we'll spend about an hour on each of these items. And is somebody bringing breakfast in? No, I'm just kidding. So this just tells you what's in this document. We start out with the background. I didn't think the report was complete without just a chronology of the events that have taken place so far that's led us to do this marketing research. In November of 2016, about a year ago, a proposal was brought forth to the town residents, and it failed with 1,151 voting in favor, 1,160 opposed, with 83 percent of voters participating. So that formed the basis of, okay, what do we do next? And after some discussion and so forth, the Select Board and the town decided to do some marketing research, just to again get a holistic view of the opinions and point of views of all residents, as opposed to trying to figure out from anecdotal snippets here and there what the town really felt about a library. So the objectives of the research, whoops, sorry, I'm juggling paper here. So the primary, as I've said, the primary objective of the research is to understand details the majority of Rockport residents would agree to for a new Rockport Public Library proposal, or an alternative measure, including not supporting a public library for Rockport. And the specific learning is listed here. We wanted to learn the voting status from the November 2016 election, just so that we could put these results in proper context, including the reasons why people voted in favor, voted against, or did not vote on that measure. We wanted to get impressions of specific aspects of the November 2016 proposal. So those of you who took the survey, you saw a list of items. Those were pulled directly from the proposal, and you were voted, you were not voted, but you were asked to rate those different items from a positive point to a negative point. We looked at specific library offerings that residents desire. Then we looked at things like the preferred library size, location, design, and the library building project budget tolerances, including the preferred mix of private and public investment. When we get to that point, it's very important to realize that part of that question was about what taxpayers would be willing to fund themselves, and then an overall cost of the project. Okay? So the overall cost of the project wouldn't necessarily be funded entirely by taxpayers. So it's two different numbers. So the methodology, we took a file of, from the town of Rockport, of taxpayers, property owners, and business owners, and also the registered voting list. We kind of merged these together. It was a little bit difficult, but we came up with a pretty good comprehensive list of people to mail to. And we sent a mail survey. It was open from September 14th through October 20th, so just over a month for people to respond. Within that mail survey, we provided a URL or email address for a web survey. And we got just over half the surveys, completed surveys came back via mail, and the rest came back via web. It's probably intuitive to realize that the mail surveys tended to be filled out by older residents of Rockport, and the web survey by slightly younger residents of Rockport. Overall, we got a great response of 32.14 percent overall for 1,090 responses or completed surveys. When you take out the mailings that we dropped that went to an address that was undeliverable, we call that the adjusted response rate, which is really the real response rate, because about 350 mailings couldn't reach their destination because the addresses no longer existed. Our response was 35.82 percent. So to put that into perspective, when we do a self-administered survey, like a web survey or a mail survey, we target a 15 percent response, where we believe at that point we're starting to minimize non-response bias. And so to get a response of 35.8 percent is a very robust, comprehensive sample. So I think we feel very good about the sample, and I'm sure you can recognize that that's a great rate of return. And so, moving on. This is just a table that shows some of the different segments that we compared when we were doing the analysis. One thing to point out here is you can see up in the blue bar, we show the maximum response to a subject question was 1,074. The reason why we worded that like that is that when you do a self-administered survey, whether it's mail or web, but especially when it's mail, a lot of people don't answer all the questions. So, and we cannot guess at what they would have responded had they filled out that question. So we basically take them out of the base. And the basis, the percentages that you'll see for each question are based on people who gave a response. And that is very typical market research practice. That's what we do, because we cannot, we cannot just say, well, you know, based on these other answers, I think that person would have answered this on this question, so let's fill it in as this. We can't do that, and we won't do that. Does that make sense? For one of the classification questions, I think we had 1,076 responses, but we wanted to show this based on one of the subject questions. And I do have a note down here to talk about weighting. I'm going to wait, no pun intended, until we get to another slide to explain that to you, okay? So we're going to skip along right now, because I'm not going to go through the key findings, because it's more fun to look at pictures. But if you want to do just a real quick read of the report, these two slides outline everything that, you know, a lot of the most important findings in the report. So we go to what we call the detailed findings. There's got to be a better way to do this. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's usually not a problem. Okay. So the first section is, we want to take a look at the November 2016 proposal and get feedback on that, because that was the last time that the whole town came together to provide their opinion on some aspect of a Rockport Public Library proposal. Again, this research was not intended to be any kind of a vote, but just a comprehensive information gathering exercise. Okay? Whoop, too quick. Okay. So the pie chart reflects the results of the vote in November 2016. 39.2 percent or thereabouts were in favor, 39.5 percent were against, 16.1 percent didn't vote. And then we had this category of refused. These are people who refused in the survey to tell us how they voted, or if they voted in the November 2016 election. So we had to include them in the pie. So actually, the tally of votes in favor and against were actually right around 40 to 41 percent, I believe. But we had to add that 5 percent. So what we did, and this is a very common practice in marketing research, we wanted to show the results of this, of this research in the proper context. And the proper context that we felt was to balance the sample as distributed by the vote in November 2016, because again, that was the last time the whole town came together to provide an opinion about the Rockport Public Library. So in reality, what we got back for responses were, we, 27.7 of the responses were from people who said that they voted in favor of the proposal. 47.9 percent of the responses were from people who said they had voted against the proposal. 19.2 percent claimed that they did not vote, and then, as I say, 5.2 percent refused. So what you do in marketing research, when the responses, especially for a self-administered survey like this, where the researchers really don't have any close control over what you're getting back, is we do what we call weighting the data. And all weighting is, is simply redistributing the responses so they reflect whatever target it is that you're trying to align with. And in this case, we wanted to align with the vote in November of 2016. And when we get to the respondent profile, you'll see that even by doing this, the age aligns pretty well with the responses that we got after redistributing it based on this criteria. The age aligns well, the gender aligns well, the presence of kids aligns pretty well. Our sample is a little bit more educated than the town of Rockport on a whole, and our sample is just slightly more affluent than the town of Rockport really is. But this is a common practice, and we felt it was the fairest way to do this, because people who oppose something are more likely to respond than people who are in favor of something, especially when we're asking the kind of information that we're asking. So that's what we did. So that's what this is based on. So all the percentages are based on this weighted data. Okay? All right.
I want to ask a question about that, just to clear in my mind what we're talking about. So you said that of the responses, in actuality, 27.7 of those, of the respondents said they voted in favor.
Yep.
And we're showing the 39.2 here, that's an adjusted number, to try to match what the actual vote was in November.
Right.
So does that mean that we've applied a factor for all the, for example, for the responses, for all the people who were in favor, who say they voted in favor, then as we go down the line and they answered questions, that group of responses has then basically ramped up a bit to match this percentage? Am I phrasing that correctly?
Yep. So somebody who said that they voted in favor, instead of their response being worth, you know, instead of, say, 1 percent, saying one person, they're basically worth one and a half people. Okay? And somebody who voted against is basically worth three-quarters of a person. So basically, you, we were emphasizing those who voted in favor, who said they voted in favor, a little bit more, and de-emphasizing those who said they voted against, because we got disproportionate number of those who voted against. Those who did not vote, the change was very, very slight. And those who refused to say whether they voted, so we don't know if they voted in favor or against, and we don't even know if they voted, those people we took on a one-to-one correspondence, because again, we can't just guess what they did.
Okay.
Okay? And that's a, that's just, so what that means is that we basically assume that the refused people, that 5 percent, which isn't going to impact the overall sample that much, we just assume that they're likely to be distributed closely to the way other respondents are in terms of the vote. I don't know if I just cleared that up or made that muddy. It is something we do all the time, all the time. Like for some, for a lot of studies, we may want to try to represent four regions. And we'll want to get enough interviews in each of the four regions so that we can have a good, robust sample, feel good about the sample tolerances and so forth. But some of the regions may be far more populated than other regions, so we will redistribute the percentages, so that the percentages reflect what we, what the regions represent based on their populations.
Bob, go ahead.
I don't understand how, if you, it seems like we're nullifying the 5.2 percent anyway, if we don't know how they voted. Now, how when you nullify that, does the 39 percent go down to 27? Or is a lot of them up rather than down?
No, the 27.7 percent went up to 39.2 percent.
Oh.
Okay? And the 47.9 percent went down to 39.5 percent.
I understand that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So this is an adjusted number.
So the pie includes the adjusted numbers.
Yeah.
Okay? I did not put the raw numbers in there, because I didn't want to have people get hung up on that. But I do assure you, it's something that's done all the time in marketing research. All right? Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
I do want to make sure everybody's clear on that, because it sounds like that's the basis for everything as we move forward. So if anybody has any questions.
So just a couple of little.
Hang on, one question from the audience there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the advantage of doing it your way? I know that you say it's standard, but what's the advantage of doing it?
If I hadn't done this, the results would have been biased towards people who voted against the proposal in November 2016. So it wouldn't have been a fair representation of how the town feels about a public library. By quite a bit, by quite a bit. 47.9 percent versus 27.7 percent went. In reality, they're almost equal. So it takes care of that. It would have been a negative bias. All right?
Okay, let's move forward.
Okay. So just a couple of interesting little things. Those who have a Rockport Public Library card, 45 percent voted in favor. Respondents, 18 to 44, 51 percent are, they're significantly more likely than those 45 to 64, 41 percent, or 65 and older, at 40 percent to have voted in favor. So the younger residents were more likely to have voted in favor of the proposal than the older respondents, which might have been a little counterintuitive to what some people might have thought, except the younger folks like to have a place to bring their kids. And then female respondents, throughout the whole research, female respondents are more positively inclined to support a Rockport Public Library than male respondents. That's not unusual. Males tend to be more critical than females in just about everything, and that's not a gender bias thing, but that is, in 30 years of marketing research, I've always seen So why did people vote in favor of the Rockport Public Library proposal? These are all top-of-mind, unaided responses. So people had to write in the response themselves. We didn't give them any prompts for responses. And the number one thing, a third of the people who voted in favor said it's important for the community. 30 percent said they prefer the Lime Rock Street location. And then the next tier of responses, they compromised to move the project forward, because if you go through my chronology of events, and you know better than I do, this discussion has been going on for a while, so some people just said, okay, you know what? The proposal is a good compromise in my mind. I want to get the library going, so I'm going to vote in favor of it. And then these are just some representative quotes. They're interesting to read. I won't read these to you now, but it's very interesting to read what people said in their own words about why they voted in favor. Reasons for voting against the proposal, almost half of those who voted against the proposal said it was too expensive, that it wasn't a good use of taxpayer money. That was by far and away the number one response of why people voted against the library proposal. Then just over a quarter, or about a quarter, said that they prefer the RDS location. The November 2016 proposal mentioned the Lime Rock Street location. And then a quarter said that Rockport doesn't need a library. And again, following up that, we have a page that shows some of the actual things that people wrote down. I will tell you that the comments were voluminous. It was a lot of comments, all over the place. Some of the surveys came back almost black because there was so much writing on them. And then among those who did not vote, 45 percent are not registered to vote in Rockport. This is because we went out to some property owners as well, whom we knew full well may not live in Rockport. So we probably had slightly more people who, who didn't vote because of that, and that's why that did not vote numbers, just a slight difference from what really happened. Or they were unable to make it, and really, that's the only substantive reasons. So then we get into, at the end of that first page of the survey, we had a number of items that we pulled from the proposal itself, to find out on a 10-point scale, where 10 is very positive and 1 is very negative, how those different aspects influenced a voter or a resident's mind in the way that they voted, or the way that they feel about the Rockport Public Library proposal. So on the left-hand side, the turquoise, those are ratings of 8, 9, and 10. So those are the positive ratings. We consider ratings of 4 through 7 neutral, and then ratings of 1 through 3 are negative. Okay? So it goes from left to right, positive to negative. Okay? One big, one fairly substantial finding here is that there's quite a large group of neutral ratings throughout.
There's a question in the back row, if you have a second.
Oh, yes.
I can't.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if I'm the only one that can't read that, but when you're telling me, I don't know if I need to know it, but you're saying that 47 percent is the top reason? I can't see it. So do you want to tell us what it says, or?
Why don't you move off, then?
If I'm the only one that can't read it, I will.
I'm trying to stay as close to the mic as I can. I just, I'm going to be able to read too. So again, this is based on a 10-point scale, where 10 is very positive, 1 is very negative. We separated the ratings into positive ratings of 8 through 10, neutral ratings of 4 through 7, and negative ratings of 1 through 3. You can see, it goes from left to right. The turquoise are the positive 8 through 10 ratings. The blue in the middle are the neutral ratings of 4 through 7, and the gray on the right-hand side are the poor ratings of 1 through 3. So as you can see, it's pretty spread out on a lot of these different items, between positive and negative comments. And there is quite a substantial neutral rating throughout. Just so you know, when you do look at these slides, the exact wording of the question that was asked to get this data is always at the bottom of the page. Okay? And it shows what the scale was, or if the question wasn't, was an unaided or a question where you just fill in yourself, or a listed response question. But, so 39 percent of the respondents felt positive about the location at 1 Lime Rock Street, 23 percent were on the fence, and 38 percent felt negative about that location. So that's a pretty even split there.
Yeah.
Perfect.
The two most negative, the two items that got the highest negative response were the town obligation of $2 million, so that's what the taxpayers would be responsible for funding. And then lower down, 45 percent were negative about the overall cost of $4 million. That $4 million is not what the taxpayers would fund, but the overall cost of the project between, and it would be funded by public and private funding. So I know this is a lot of numbers. The way to read these pages are, so what we did is, we looked at some of the different segments, how they would respond, and columns A, B, and C, so the first three columns starting from the left, these are the, how people voted in November 2016 election. So column A is in favor, column B are people who voted against, column C are those who did not vote. We did not include the refused in this analysis. Then the next three columns are, we had a question about how important is the Rockport Public Library to the community. Column D are those people who rated that question 8 through 10 in terms of importance, so they think it is very important. Column E are people who rated that question a 4 through 7, so they're neutral. Column F are those people who rated that question a 1 through 3. And then we have gender, male, female.
Question?
Yep.
I'm sure that I could probably decipher this from home, but what is the EF after importance to community, agree, under 1 Lime Rock, it says 43 percent EF.
Yeah, I was just about to explain that.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. So you'll see that some of the cells are shaded, and they're shaded by the color of the grouping that they're in. That means that that particular cell, so if you take the very upper left-hand side, the 48 percent is shaded under column A. That means that, and then there's a little subscript B, that means that at the 95 percent level of confidence, those who voted in favor were more, were significantly more likely than those who voted against, in column B, to have a positive, to rate the location at 1 Lime Rock Street positively. So basically, the shaded areas show the, where the segments rated something higher, and then the little subscript letter shows what segment they rated that particular item higher than. Okay? Now, you can only do, I really don't want to get into statistics, but you can only compare columns A, B, and C together, columns D, E, and F together, and columns G and H together, because otherwise they cross over and all statistical foundation goes out the door. Yep.
So you're kind of saying that the people who voted in favor of the library cared about all of those things, more than the people who voted?
They felt more positive about all aspects.
It doesn't really help you tease out any of those variables from each other in terms of how significant they were for a voter?
Well, what it shows is, it shows the gap. It shows how much more positive that the segment that voted in favor was for each of the items, how much more widespread the positive feeling was for each of the items than those who voted against. So you can see that there's a gap between the two. You would expect that those who voted in favor would be more positive about all the aspects of the proposal. The reason we included this was to show just what that gap is. So for example, those who voted against, a higher percentage actually felt positively about the location at 1 Lime Rock Street than they did about the interior layout or design of the proposed building. Because 27 percent of those who voted against actually gave a positive rating to the location at 1 Lime Rock Street, whereas only 4 percent of those who voted against gave a positive rating for the interior layout or design.
Can I ask another question? How important is it for me to understand what you just said?
It depends on how much you want to get into the details of the data.
And I'm just curious, like, do I need to grasp what you just said completely to have this be extremely useful to me, or can someone maybe just explain it to me later? Like... Like, and maybe just using, in the example, importance to community, you've got the neutral column. You have two in that column that are both at seven percent. One is for comprehensiveness of info available, and the other is interior layout or design. They're both at seven percent, but one has an F and one doesn't.
Right.
Maybe using that as an example, why does that one have an F but the other one doesn't? They're both at seven percent in the same column.
Okay, so the F refers to column F, right? So, seven percent is not statistically higher than five percent, but it is statistically higher than two percent. Okay? So, the reason, I know, I really didn't want to get into Statistics 101, but the reason this is important is, if something is not significantly different, then you just interpret the percentages as being the same. So, it really only pertains to when you get down to the detailed level like this. This doesn't, what this does is, it basically gives you a little more texture to all the research. And when you want to start to drill down and figure out what you're going to do next, you can start looking at some of these segments and determine, you know, do we want to get this segment more involved, or we want to get this segment more involved? It doesn't change the overall outcome of this research, understanding this. And perhaps I should move on. Okay. So, this next slide is the exact same thing, but it's with different segments. We've got three age segments, the presence of children in a household, and then three income segments. And it just shows you what the different segments are thinking. So on each of the aspects of the proposal, if you look at columns D and E, the presence of children, the presence of children had no bearing on the percent of people that felt positive about these different aspects of the proposal. Okay? And as you can see, the sixty-five or older crowd, in five of the areas, they were, they had a significantly higher level of positive ratings than the younger segments, than one of the younger segments. Okay. How about library use?
Question, Jan? You get the microphone?
Sorry.
It's been more than fifty years, I think, since I took statistics classes. Can you tell me about the quality and the length of the executive summary that comes along with this study?
It's a two-page, it's a two-page written executive summary. And then there's conclusions and recommendations at the end, that's two pages. It doesn't go into anywhere near as much detail. It doesn't include any of the findings from the tables.
No, but I expected that it summarizes and clarifies the findings. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, access to the Rockport Public Library. Eighty-one percent of residents in Rockport have access to a library card that they can use, a Rockport Public Library card that they can use. It's, it's almost all of the people who voted in favor of the library proposal, ninety-three percent have access to a library card, which is significantly higher than those who voted against the proposal. But still, those who voted against the proposal, seventy-five percent of them have access to a Rockport Public Library card. Households with lower income are significantly less likely, seventy-seven percent, to have access to a library card than those in the moderate household income range, at eighty-seven percent. Those, the affluent residents, a hundred K plus, they are sort of in the middle at eighty-one percent. And women are more likely than, significantly more likely than men to have access to a Rockport Public Library card. On average, we asked, we asked people how they typically, how frequently they typically visit the Rockport Public Library. And we had the opportunity for people to say, none, or they could say, once a week, once a month, once a week. We gave them a time. And what we did, all those who did visit, well, everybody, we put on the same timetable. And so we were able to discern that Rockport residents tend to visit, on average, tend to visit the Rockport Public Library on average thirty-three point one times a year. So that's just under once a week. You know, a little bit less than once a week. Okay? And there's some demographic breakouts there, too. Then we asked about the importance of specific library offerings. And the ones that scored the highest, so this, we used a ten-point scale, again, where one is not at all important and ten is very important. We worked from left to right, again, like we did with the previous rating scale, where the left side are the top box ratings of eight, nine, or ten. So that's the percent that feel that particular offering is important. The darker blue are neutral ratings of four-through-seven. And on the right-hand side, the gray ratings are those who gave it a not-important rating of one-through-three. The traditional library offerings really surfaced to the top, like borrowing books, library assistance, a children's area, a quiet place, access to the latest technology, reference area, and young adult. Those were the things that more than half the people who responded to the survey felt were important service offerings of a library. Okay? And then below that are the things that less than half of the people who responded to the survey felt were important. And then, I'm not going to go through this, but we broke it out by the different segments again, just to give you a little bit of the detail as to what was driving those different overall percentages. So, so the first table for the segments are those items that were at the top of the list. So these are the items that are most important to the residents of Rockport who completed the survey. The next table are those items which were least important. And then we did the same pair of tables for the other segments that we had analyzed it by the age and so forth. And these tables are set up the exact same way as the other ones that we saw earlier. We also include an area for people to write in the top additional library offerings that they'd like to see. And as you can see by the table here, not much really came to mind by a big group of people. Only eight percent said organized youth activities, which was the number one item. So really, not much else beyond the list that we offered folks. We asked about the perceived importance of the Rockport Public Library to the community. And we actually had people rate a statement, "To what extent do you disagree or agree that the Rockport Public Library is an important part of the community?" A ten is a strongly agree, and a one is a strongly disagree. Three-quarters of the respondents said that they agree that the Rockport Public Library is an important part of the community. Thirteen percent were in the neutral category, and only thirteen percent disagreed with that. Okay? The older population, sixty-five years or older, were more inclined to agree with that statement than the younger age segments. And interestingly, those without children in the house, in the household were more likely to agree with the statement, and females were more likely to agree with the statement. So then we asked about a couple of different aspects of a library, and what people thought about different things. We put together a parking scenario and asked if people felt, if this gave them a positive or a negative impression based on a ten-point scale, where ten is very positive and one is very negative. And it was about focusing on just parking. Please indicate your impressions if the Rockport Public Library proposal includes fourteen flat-level parking spaces located close to the building and dedicated to library patrons. Thirty-seven percent felt positive about that. Thirty-five percent were neutral, and twenty-eight percent were negative. So you can see, parking is one of those areas that there's a lot of disagreement, or people are not on the same page with parking.
So, because when I just initially looked at that, I thought, oh, that's some decent guidance, because only, you know, a little over a quarter of folks actually strongly feel that it is an issue.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but still, you have pretty big categories in each of them. But yes, it does tend to be more positive than negative, yes. And the neutral category, you know, they're, they're really just not as committed to one side or the other. So probably, the parking doesn't mean as much to them. The size of the proposed building, so we asked people if they felt that the proposed building for the Rockport Public Library was too big, about the right size, too small, or they didn't have any opinion about it. About thirty percent felt that the building that was proposed was too big. Thirty-six percent said it was about the right size. Thirteen percent said it was too small, and twenty-one percent said it had, they didn't have an opinion about it. So it looks like you're gravitating a little bit more towards the size of the building being just a little bit too big that was presented. I don't think that there's a big group of people who would want a building that's much smaller than what was proposed. But definitely, a little bit smaller than what was proposed tends to be the angle of this. The exterior design of the building. So we asked people if they would prefer the exterior design of the Rockport Public Library to be similar in style to the buildings around it, similar to what a typical municipal building looks like, not a lot of architectural details, or a building that is a statement to the future, or the exterior design or appearance doesn't matter to me. So over half of the respondents, fifty-seven percent, said that they'd like a building that's similar in style to the buildings around it. So they wanted to blend in with the surroundings as opposed to sticking out in any manner. Only eight percent wanted a typical municipal-like building, and fifteen percent wanted a building that's a statement. Twenty percent don't care. So, it suggests that a building that blends in with the surrounding buildings is the preferred direction for respondents overall. This next question is interesting. So we asked impressions of two locations that have been discussed quite a lot, the R E S location and the One Lime Rock Street location. And again, we use the same scale, where ten is very positive and one is very negative, and what their impressions are of these two locations. And people obviously could provide ratings for both locations. And again, going from left to right, where left is positive, ratings of eight-through-ten, the middle segment are neutral ratings of four-through-seven, and then we have, on the right-hand side, negative ratings of one-through-three. This is incredibly similar between the two locations. And I, I don't say that just in jest. I don't think I've seen two different items rated on a scale that have had as similar a response as this. I mean, it's incredible.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, on the, on previous page seventeen, you have, and I don't want you to click back, but you have feelings about specific aspects of library proposal. And then you've got that breakout, positive, neutral, negative, for location at One Lime Rock. And what's interesting to me is, thirty-nine percent of people felt positive about One Lime Rock, then felt negative by one percentage point, but that's flipped here, where in this one, R E S has the slight percentage edge higher than Lime Rock. And I just, that's interesting that when you ask specifically about Lime Rock, it wins by one percentage point. And then when you break them out into two different ones, R E S wins by two percentage points.
I think either way, it's just a tie.
I know, I just.
Well, you've got to remember, too, and Bruce, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the previous question was in the context of the proposal that was presented in November. In other words, how did you feel about that aspect of that proposal? It's a slightly different question, I think, but I don't, I'm not the expert there.
No, that is correct. And some people who didn't recall the proposal, or who didn't vote, opted out of the first question and went into the second, but it's not a lot. But it, but that is more the context, that the first question was about the location, as mentioned in the proposal and so forth, and then this was just a straight. Even though there's a one- or two-point difference, it's virtually the same. Because when you put, again, not to get into statistics, but when you put the sample tolerances together, there's really no difference here.
I don't know, you don't have it here, but I'm wondering, would it be possible to drill into the data and find people's actual preference using this? For example, let's say there's somebody who rated One Lime Rock a ten, and R E S an eight. They're both going to fall into that light-blue category. So is somebody who rated, who did the opposite, rated, you know, the other one ten and the other one eight.
Right.
Would there be, is there any value in looking at that spread among people's responses? In other words, I mean, some people may have rated them one and three, too, but, but they had a preference. You know, that, that question offered them a chance to show a preference, even if it was a slight preference.
Yeah, and we did have quite a number of people who used this question to either show their preference for Lime Rock or their preference for R E S, because they would rate Lime Rock a ten and R E S a one, or vice versa.
Right.
So, we can take a look at that and see if, if that reveals any additional insight.
Try and find some way to break the tie. And if that doesn't have any value statistically, then, then tell me that, and we'll move on. But I just don't, I wondered whether it would have any value.
Yeah, yeah. No, I actually, as we were going through the individual surveys themselves, just looking at them before we tallied them, we could not have predicted this being as close as it is.
I think we could have.
Yeah. Okay. So, we also looked at the, at the locations by the segments. These are the same types of tables. Incredibly, the, the bottom half of the table, where we look at age, children in the household, and income, there's virtually no difference across those segments. All right, the investment. Again, keep in mind that we separated the investment into two specific questions. One is, what would taxpayers be willing to fund? So that's the bond that the town would put out. The other is, the whole, overall cost of the project, which the taxpayers wouldn't necessarily foot that entire, entire bill. That was my understanding. So that the, the total cost of the project would be funded through public taxpayer and private funding. Okay? So, we asked people what an acceptable cost to property taxpayers would be for a Rockport Public Library. We had the option of nothing, and then we had these various ranges. And we simply had people select what would be an acceptable level of funding. We also showed a couple of examples of what different levels of funding, what the cost would be to their property tax bill, so that people could put it in better context. Because it's hard to put, you know, like, what does a million dollars mean to my property tax bill? So, we tried to put that in context for people. And these are the results. And what I did is, so you can see, there's a, the bulk of the responses are between one million to less than two million, at twenty-eight percent, and then two million to less than three million, at twenty-four percent. If you start at the highest level and, and work upwards to see what the majority of the residents in the town of Rockport believes is an acceptable level, you know, you start at four million or more, there's five percent. You add six percent for the three million to less than four million. Then you add the twenty-four percent for two million to less than three million, so you're up to thirty-five percent. And then you add the twenty-eight percent for one million to less than two million. That brings you to sixty-three percent. So sixty-three percent of residents in the town of Rockport would find a level of one million to less than two million as being acceptable. They would, they would fund that. Okay? We also broke this out. And the same dynamics appeared across the different segments. Then we looked at the total cost of the project. And again, we provided a place for people to say nothing as well as a, a number of different categories. Now again, this is the entire cost of the project, not just what taxpayers would be funding. And you can see that twenty-four percent, a quarter of residents said that the, that the required total investment of the project should be four million or more. But if you peel that back, working up like I just did till you get to a ma, the majority, you have twenty-four percent for four million or more. Add nineteen percent who said three million to less than four million, that brings you to forty-three percent. And then you add the fourteen percent who said two million to less than three million. That gives you fifty-seven percent. So the majority would say that the, the requirement for the total investment is two million to less than three million or more. And so what's interesting is the ratio of public funding to private funding from this survey is fifty-fifty, which is exactly what it was in the proposal that was set forth last November two thousand sixteen. So that's, that's, that's kind of interesting that people who responded to the survey came up with the same fifty-fifty ratio for funding. So money is not the.
Money is not the object. Given the proposal that came in November of two thousand sixteen, everything, money can be pared away. People are still willing to pay up to the kind of proportion that was on that bill. Fifty-fifty split up to four million.
Yeah, it's, it's, so the total figures are about a million less on each side than what was proposed in November two thousand sixteen. So it's a little bit less. But people, because people believe that the Rockport Public Library is important to the community, they are willing to pay something for it and they do think that it requires a decent investment to build what's needed. This table just shows the taxpayer requirement on the left versus the total investment and basically shows what I just went through. We did have a section at the end of the survey for additional comments. I can't say it really added much to the findings of the survey. It was sort of a reiteration of a lot of the points that were made during the survey. These were all written in comments and I can tell you right now that they were not as concise as this. They, there were some substantial comments. But it's all good because people got the opportunity to voice how they feel. Because I don't think this opportunity had been given to folks before entirely. Well, the opportunity had been given, but not everybody took advantage. More people took advantage of this opportunity than other opportunities. Then the respondent profile, so this is the characteristics of the sample in terms of, of age and gender. And where I could, where we could, we compared it to the US Census. We used the two thousand ten US Census. It's a little bit old right now, it's seven years old. But if you look at the population growth of the town of Rockport, hasn't grown much. So, you know, it's still a good proxy. And the age distribution is reasonable compared to the census. The gender distribution is reasonable compared to the census. The presence of kids, so in the survey, sixty percent of the respondents did not have any kids. The census says sixty-seven percent of the population of Rockport don't have kids. So that's, that's pretty close. On the upper right-hand side, the education level. The sample is a lot more educated than the town of Rockport is. By quite a bit. Thirty-eight percent with a graduate degree versus fifteen percent according to the US Census. And then in terms of income, it's, it's a pretty good match, but the respondent profile is a little bit skewed to the more affluent. Of course, there's an awfully big category of people who preferred not to answer that question, twenty-seven percent. So, so I felt very good about the, the goodness of fit of the survey sample to the actual census data for the town of Rockport. I didn't see anything there, except for perhaps education that would have skewed results much. But I don't think the education really did, did anything to skew the results one way or the other. So our conclusions, and if you're going to read the key findings, you want to read the conclusions as well because it kind of ties everything together. So the conclusions are, we felt that the results supported that Rockport should continue to try and to find a viable option for supporting the Rockport Public Library. Most people, three-quarters agree that the Rockport Public Library is important to the community. Most people in Rockport have access to a Rockport Public Library card. The visitation, I thought, was quite strong at thirty-three, at an average of thirty-three point one times a year. And a lot of, most people felt that the traditional library offerings are important. It does, the data also reveals that in order to move forward with a proposal for the Rockport Public Library, people are going to have to compromise on some of the elements of a proposal. Obviously, the location is probably the, the number one area that people are just going to have to accept wherever it, it's located. Because that's, that's very close in terms of which location people favor. Parking, while the scenario that we showed did slightly skew to people feeling positive about that, they, you know, that, I would say that's the second most contentious issue. And then the whole room for expansion, you know, to what degree do people want to have the ability to, or, or for the, for a new Rockport Public Library facility to be larger than it is right now? I think, I think the, the research kind of supports that it needs to be larger than it is right now. But what, what does, what kinds of guidelines need to be put in place to, to account for new growth, if any? And then in terms of the, the investment, as I mentioned earlier, it looks like taxpayers are willing to, or the respondents to the survey suggest that they're willing to fund at least one million to less than two million through, through taxes and so forth. And a total investment of at least two million to less than three million. So about a million less than what was proposed in November of two thousand sixteen. But it's important to note that the public and private funding remains at fifty-fifty. Just the same as it was presented in the November two thousand sixteen proposal. Okay? Other things to consider is the exterior design of the Rockport Public Library building needs to be similar in style to the buildings around it. People don't want to have a statement made. And it looks like it should include upgrades to library systems and provide library patrons with access to the latest technology. It doesn't really make sense if you, if, if you're going to, to create a new Rockport Public Library facility, it doesn't make sense to be stuck with old technology. I mean, so. So that's what we came up with. I, I hope that is helpful and provided some insight. Again, it wasn't intended to be a vote. It was just an intention to create a public forum for everybody to provide their input as to what they think of the Rockport Public Library should include or not include.
Okay. We'll let now the, the board and the library committee ask questions of Bruce about the data. And then once we've sort of exhausted it, then we'll invite the public to ask a few more questions and then we'll close with any further board or committee questions. So Owen?
In the conclusions and recommendations, in addition, some of the desire and/or expectations for expansion will have to be pulled back. We didn't ask specific questions about expansion. So how did you infer that expansion was one of, one of the focus areas? Because I agree with you, but I'm just curious how you inferred that out of your data.
I, I inferred it from the level of spend that people were willing to undertake. And the fact that in terms of the importance of the different library offerings that we presented, they really stuck to the more traditional library offerings, didn't come up with many new things on their own. And some of the, some of the offerings that are, that we put on the survey that were sort of pushing the envelope for traditional library offerings a little bit, people, the, the, less than half of the people thought those were important. Interestingly, though, there were some traditional library offerings like magazines and periodicals and lending music. That was supported by less than half of the respondents. So putting, pulling all those things together, I kind of, I felt maybe a more conservative expansion track was more palatable.
Thank you. Anybody else from the board have any questions for Bruce?
Just maybe two real quick ones. How many of the surveys were rejected? I remember we talked about that early on, that if they didn't have their address and things like that. So I'm just curious.
So following the directions to put street address down was not followed well. So we basically only rejected about, I think it was even less than ten. And it was because of being totally incomplete and people just writing a nasty note across the, the survey. So to take care of that, that's why the weighting is so much more important. Because if, if somebody decided that they filled out five hundred surveys themselves opposing, you know, that they had voted against, we would have smoothed out that with the weighting factor.
Does that take into account the undeliverable?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to answer that. We ended up with, I think, about a hundred and thirty or forty that were bounced back a number of times that people had moved, obviously, and not given a forwarding address. So, and we sent out.
We actually, it was actually three hundred and forty.
Three hundred and forty?
Three hundred and forty. Yeah, so we sent out somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand five hundred surveys and we, and about three hundred and forty of those were undeliverable. They, they never reached their destination. And I actually got a note from one person who, the, the survey had been addressed to her mother who had died about a year ago.
I, I only say that because my postmaster saw mine as undeliverable for the street address and tucked it in the box, so.
Right, so I know, I know the post office here and Rick and his staff did a yeoman's job with getting surveys, you know.
What, what we did was, the post office went back, as, as Mark just alluded to, went back and ID'd the people and made sure that people from the voter checklist, they, they were getting their survey from the voter checklist and they had a post office box. And the survey was mailed to a street address that it went into their post office box. So very few of those were bounced back to us. And then on top of that, we went back again after and reached out to all of the people who may not have been voters but were property taxpayers. And I, I forget the number of additional mailings we did for that one. You know, it was, it was several hundred.
I just, I just remember our overall total mailing was around thirty-four hundred to thirty-five hundred.
So we went back again and compared lists and made, to make sure that people who were non-registered voters also got, got one. And that, you know, that covered more people. But most, most of the ones that bounced back were from the voter checklist, which is since, whenever the last time it was purged was. And so there were many of those people, that many of those were bounced back because the people had obviously moved.
Any more questions from the board?
Not so much a question, but just the last time I sat here and you presented, I gave you a hard time about some things. And I, I think you did a really good job.
Thank you.
I think that this gives us some really, definitely gives us some answers about some important questions.
And I did not give you a hard time and I still think you did a good job.
Library committee and Ben, questions for Bruce?
I don't have any specific questions. I mean, I'm, I, I'm, I liked it. I mean, it was nice to see that the support was there. I always sort of assumed it was, there were different reasons for voting against it, but knowing the community overall supports the library is, is nice to see on paper. The thirty-three point one visits, that's, that's jives with our numbers too, from our, what we do annually. So I don't know, I have, we'll see the new numbers, which way it goes. But that's pretty close to what we see too. So that was nice to see that those were in line. No, I mean, it gives us a lot of, a lot of data. We know we need to work on the location thing. We know we need to work on parking and cost. This just gives us more parameters on where we need to go on that, so thank you.
Confirmed a lot of things that we kind of already had assumed, so.
I always tell product managers that if the research comes in, in, in right field, and they've always been thinking left field, they've got a bit of a disconnect with their constituency. So we always do checks like this to, for, to make sure that the, the findings make intuitive sense. So that's great to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? If anybody from the public would like to ask Bruce a question, please either use the, the mic that's going around or you can come up and use the mic where Bruce is if you want. Does anybody from the, I know we had some questions through the presentation, that's great. But if anybody else has any further questions about the data and about the results.
I have, Mr. Chairman, I have one that's come up online. Several people have asked the same question online. We have thirty-nine people watching and a bunch of people conversing, which is really interesting to follow. But one of the questions is, based on the, the split, you know, the percentage split, and I'm going to paraphrase it here, if, if we come in with a proposal, how, what do you think the result would be is if we came in with a proposal that was three and a half million dollars but was a, you know, one million dollar tax assessment and two and a half million dollars of donations? Are you saying that that still is likely to fail? That the, the results of that are showing that?
No, that'd be a four million total, in other words.
Four million dollar project total or two and a half million dollar project?
I think it would have less of a chance to, to pass. Yep, yep, and if, it seemed like the acceptable cost to property taxpayers, you know, the one, the one million to less than two million, sixty-three percent would support that. Whereas the two million to less than three million for the overall project cost, fifty-seven percent found that to be the required investment. So that doesn't have quite as much room for negotiation. I think, you know, obviously, other variables come into play, like, you know, what can you get for the, for the investment and so forth.
Any further questions from the audience? Well?
If people watching at home or any of these folks wanted to access this, and this isn't necessarily a question for you.
I sent it to Ben and I sent it to Diane.
And it'll be posted on our website at some point soon. So everyone can access it through the town of Rockport's website.
Yeah, I'll have it on my website and my Facebook page tomorrow morning.
Great.
I guess one final question and, and I'll ask both Ben and Rick if they know. Do we have any idea how many people came to the library, the town office, to pick up a survey and do it? You probably would have no way of knowing that because you would, would have gotten it.
I had a, I had a handful come pick them up. I think they still got mailed to their house. I had a, I had a couple of people that were like, oh, I need another one, you know, I filled it out funnier. I want a, I want a different one.
I had the same, I think we had the same experience. I, I don't think it was an overwhelming number, I think it was a handful of people.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and I definitely pointed a lot of people to the link to do it that way too. We pushed them that way whenever we could. But yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't like we were getting a run on the paper copies at the library.
I really want to thank the town for participating in this. People who showed up.
People who showed up.
Yeah, the response rate was, was fantastic.
In the process, that really, really helps us.
There's thirty-nine people, there's more people watching than we're here.
Yeah, it really was a terrific response rate. I mean, an adjusted response rate of thirty-five percent is fantastic.
Cheryl had a question?
Just, once we have an opportunity to actually sit down with the full report, how do we direct additional questions that might arise?
I assume Bruce has an email address, and, or through Rick.
You can do it through me?
Through Rick to Bruce.
Is that the best way, you think, Bruce?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
As I say, right now, we have an agenda item for the regular select board meeting next Monday, as to start the discussion on next steps, and that may be as short a discussion as, okay, let's schedule a workshop with the two groups and a working period to see where we go from here. But there will be at least some brief opportunity, we have a long agenda next Monday, but a brief opportunity for perhaps some initial impressions after everybody's had a chance to kind of sleep on this data. Jen?
But regardless of what happens Monday, is it going after the next select board meeting? You are going to do this as a workshop format?
The next select board meeting is, it may simply be scheduling...
But I mean, regardless of what happens at that meeting, the idea of doing a combined workshop.
I think we have to. That's my, I mean, I'm only one person, the rest of the board will have to weigh in, but I think we, you know, we're at the point now where we've had a voluminous amount of data delivered to us, and we've got to sit around and chew on it and figure out what we want to do. That would be my opinion, and the rest of the board will have to weigh in. I can't make the decision for the board. Okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, thank you all for coming. Thank you to everybody who's watching for participating. We have a lot of data, and we have our work cut out for us.
It's just a presentation, so...
Stand adjourned.